Calling the Putnam County Board of County Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017 to order. It is nine o'clock. Invocation will be led this morning by Ms. Sheila McCoy with a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Goddard. Ms. McCoy, if you'll come up. Thank you.
Father God, we thank you for the privilege to be able to invoke your presence and ask for your guidance in this our local government. Help us to remember that all governments are ordained by you and help us to be civil with each other. I pray that you, that our leadership here will seek your guidance in all matters, the ones that's great and the one that's small, and that you will lead us to the perfect solution, the just and fair solution to all the issues that come before this commission. We thank you again for your son, Jesus, and we always come in prayer in his name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Commissioners, in your packet, pages four through sixteen, we need to approve the minutes of the special workshop, the regular meeting, and the emergency meeting. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Commissioner Pickens, you will be doing a proclamation for the Emergency Medical Services Week, so if you'll go to the podium. And Quinn Romey, Chief Romey, if you'll bring you and your staff up if you want, and come on up and meet Commissioner Pickens at the podium.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2017-38, Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Strong. Whereas emergency medical professionals and volunteers provide medical care to victims of sudden life-threatening injuries and illnesses, often under stressful conditions and in high-risk situations to save lives, and whereas Florida's residents and visitors benefit daily from the knowledge, knowledge, skill, and judgment of paramedics and emergency medical technicians, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, and others who encompass the emergency medical services system, and whereas emergency medical professional personnel must rapidly assess, manage, and effectively provide care in unpredictable situations and requiring life and death judgments, and whereas Florida EMS teams unselfishly serve on the front line of health and care when responding to man-made and natural disasters at the local, state, and national levels, and where it is critical to the general public, be made aware and understand, support, and effectively use its local emergency medical services system, and whereas recognition is due to the emergency medical system for its accomplishments and contributions to improve public welfare through healthcare, medical transportation, injury prevention, education, disaster response, homeland security, and other initiatives that reduce healthcare costs and serve, save lives. They are now forebuit proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners in meeting assembled on the 23rd date of May, 2017, that the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2017, is declared Emergency Medical Services Week in Putnam County, and that all citizens are encouraged to take part in recognizing the hard work and dedicated services provided by all personnel providing emergency medical services.
Thank you.
I make a recommendation that we adopt this proclamation.
Second.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens, proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for recognizing all of the hard-working men and women, both volunteer, paid, and other. I'd like to get Sheriff Deloach and the Colonel up because they are part of EMS in Putnam County. A lot of people may not know, but one program that the sheriff's office has is in each of their patrol cars, they have AEDs. When there's a reported cardiac arrest, not only are we sending an ambulance, a fire truck, but we're also sending a law enforcement officer, whichever one gets there first, you know, can get the AED on and make a difference. So, we're trying to make sure that, you know, each and every corner of the county's covered and through a partnership with the sheriff and his folks, you know, I think we're making a difference because I know the sheriff has had some deputies get there and actually had, you know, a save off of it, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Chief Romey, while you're up, I'm gonna take a point of privilege if my board doesn't mind. Talk about the recent rains, lightning strikes, and the burn ban, if you don't mind, because we don't want anybody to think that this burn ban should be over with because we've gotten a little bit of rain.
We did get a little bit of rain over the weekend and a little bit yesterday. Some areas may have gotten a little more than others, but just as a result, I sent y'all a picture of the lightning strikes from Friday evening, and after that, we had over fourteen fires, new fires, besides one we were currently working on. So, I have lost count off the top of my head. I think we're right around nineteen or twenty open fires. The largest is two hundred and ten, the smallest is a half an acre, so, but each one of those, we have to continue to watch and monitor and make sure it, you know, stays where it's at because once you catch it, we don't want to let it out.
We don't need our citizens burning right now, anything.
Correct.
You know, so.
Yeah, we're actively looking and watching, you know, the weather, and although we may have rain today, within a day or two, that rain's gone if we don't continue to get into the pattern. When Jason Fochet and I were up, you know, a month or two ago, and we were talking about that, we've gotta get into the afternoon rain pattern to get us out of where we're at.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you EMS.
Y'all want to come up here and get your... Kathy Fisk, Coast Guard Auxiliary Commissioner Lible will be doing this proclamation. I think it has something to do with his boating experience that he had, so it's only fitting for him to do this.
Right here. I'm gonna present you, I'm gonna read this proclamation to you first, then we'll talk about safety. Okay, proclamation number 2017-39, National Safe Boating Week. Whereas for nearly ninety million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity that may be enjoyed year-round, and whereas from coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are talking, taking to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. And whereas during National Safe Boating Week, the Board wishes to bring special attention to this pastime and remind recreational boaters to ensure that they and their loved ones are safe and responsible while exploring our nation's waterways. And whereas, proper planning for the day of boating begins even before leaving the home by getting free vessel safety checks from Kathy, taking a safe boating course, filing a float plan with a trusted family member or friend, and checking the weather before boating. And whereas every boater should wear a U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jacket at all times while boating, as drowning remains the number one cause of death for recreational boaters each year, and the majority of drowning victims in recreational boating accidents are not wearing a life jacket. And whereas, safe and responsible boating includes never operating a boat while under the influence of drugs or alcohol and knowing basic navigation rules. And whereas, on average, six hundred and fifty people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately three-fourths of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jacket. And now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of Commissioners in the meeting assembled on this 23rd day of May, 2017, that the week of May 20th through May 27th, 2017, is declared Safe Boating Week in Putnam County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners urges all those who boat to wear it and practice safe boating habits.
Thank you.
You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lible, we need a motion.
You have to motion it.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
He's too excited about National Safe Boating Week. Isn't that cool?
It is.
What it is, is we appreciate every month, every year that comes around, the city of Placca and Putnam County themselves and the cities they're in, always help to support and give an extra oomph to everybody about this week. This week just is a special time that everybody's getting together to really put on what has been going on and should be going on every year. As he stated, when you leave your house, if you don't have everything ready, you're not gonna be a safe boater before you get on it. Many people don't realize the different sizes in life jackets, the different life jackets and things that are needed for each event. What we do is, this is a special time that you'll see us around, we will be down at the Blue Crab Festival, we'll be there Saturday and Sunday, you'll see people like me wandering around or in blue ODUs. And what it is, is it's a special time that we just get out more one-on-one with the public. If you don't have a boat there, that's fine, we give you your name or number, we will come to your house, we will personally inspect your boat, there is no charge, and if you don't pass, you have the information that you need, and when you're done, you call us and we come back and inspect you. The biggest thing is, we try to keep Putnam County safe, and that is our goal throughout the state of Florida, not just this week, but throughout the year. And I appreciate everybody in your support and continued support for over ten years that I've been doing it.
Good, thank you.
And I thank you so much.
Thank you.
You also inspect kayaks and paddling crafts.
Oh, yes, yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
Paddle crafts now are a big thing out here. It's not a lot that really has to be done on it, it's a general, that, you know, you have your life jacket, I know that you have the paddle crafts at night, you have to make sure you have your light on, your overall condition of your boat, and the biggest thing is that you respect and have it. If your boat is not correct, if you're missing something, if you have a crack leak, if you have holes that are sealed and should be, these are the things that we just try to get out there and say, okay, this is not correct here, or this is not safe, to keep you on the water safe, because canoes and kayaks at night, as your paddle crafts, you know, are not very visible. They always wear a light, either on their helmet or in the front of it. It's the biggest thing that we're trying to express, that these are vessels that can be examined. These are boats, and that we give information on only canoes and kayaks. It is a completely different stream of things. There are now canoe and kayak courses that are being offered. You have the National Canoe and Kayak Association that you can go online, and you can also get in touch with me at any time. I will come and meet you somewhere, meet you at the water, inspect your canoe or your kayak. We also have orange stickers, which is a really good thing. They're about this big, they're like a four-by-eight card, and what it does is, we have you put them on the inside of your kayak, because a lot of places, when they get together and you beach, they don't have the waves come and people, you know, walk off with them, even though they shouldn't. What this does is, this has your name, it has your address on it, and it's all put in marker, and then this way, because if it does float off while you're having a wonderful dinner at our wonderful restaurants, then somebody can find it and you know where it goes. A lot of canoes and kayaks are found that, because they do not have VIN numbers, nobody knows where they go. So, if you lose yours, this is just an extra safety step. It takes about five minutes, it's just done in person, quick, simple, easy, and I'll be glad to do it. Anybody needs help.
Good, thank you.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
If we're out on the water and we break down, who do we call? How do we get off?
Well, first off, you should have your float plan already put in. You never go out by yourself, you should always be with at least a partner. Most people have phones. If not, you go to the nearest shore, or you stay with your boat, never, ever leave your canoe and kayak. You should have a reflective device, which is not required, but we have it, and what it does is, if anybody's coming by or anything because you're floating, you can reflect, you can show, you always have your whistle on you at all times. That whistle is a sound-producing device. Also, this works really good. And if not, you stay with your boat, no matter what you do, there are boat places that you can get insurance where you can call them, but if you're in a canoe and kayak and you're on the water, you just want to try to slowly go to shore and stay out of the way of people and do the best that you can because...
How much is that ticket if you don't have a life jacket or a whistle? The whistle's like a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, and they go up, and they go up, and that's the biggest thing, and it's not for somebody, it's for safety.
Sure.
The boater's the main thing that people don't realize, if you're on a boat, simple example real quick, you're on a boat, most people have their keys, where's the whistle? On the keys. Now, you're having a great day, and Pop turns a corner too quick and you tumble over. Now, you're in your life jacket like you're supposed to be, and you're floating, and it's dark water, and you're around the corner, well, nobody sees you, nobody hears you, why? Where's your whistle? Your whistle's on your keys. Takes five minutes. We even give out free whistles, and if you have...
She'll give you a lot of gifts if you get her permission.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it is a program. Now, we will be at the Library in Interlochen for the kids event that opens on the first Saturday, which I think is the third, and we have, we'll have a little PA booth which will have information. And the biggest thing is, is safety. If you can go on United States Coast Guard Auxiliary website, any of them, push in fourteen eight, which is where I'm at, but you don't have to. If you want a safe boating course, you just push in safe boating course, they'll put your name and address in, and they will link you to an area that is closest. Ours now are in Green Cove, they're done once a month. It is an eight-hour course, and it goes from top to bottom, and then you take your test and you send it in. It is all hands-on, even, and we have Chris Costelli, which is with the sheriff's department up there. So, yes, see, you've got a lot of questions you want to answer. Now, I need a photo.
Let's end it on a funny story, though. You think that boats don't get lost, but as a commissioner, I got a call one afternoon from some folks I won't mention, but they had lost their pontoon boat.
Oh, wow.
Yes, and it was in their slip in a boathouse up in Slings last time they saw it. When they came home, we had a big northeasterly going on for a few days, and the water got to that point that the pontoon boat left the dock and took off, and we had to go get those folks and take them up and down the river until they found their pontoon boat.
I'll be darned.
So, it does happen.
And it makes a difference, so.
Photo?
Yep. Kathy, Commissioner, why don't you come?
Oh, yeah.
See, he wants a private picture.
No, that's fine. Okay, commissioners, now the time has come for our public comment. I have two blue cards. The portion of this agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonably to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room and should be submitted prior to meeting to the deputy clerk who sits to the right of the podium. You don't have to have a blue card to fill out, but if you want to speak to us, we're gonna call the blue cards first, and we'll go from there. We do ask that you do keep it to three minutes as best you can. Our first card is Mr. Earl Ballenge, and he wants to talk about items O and P.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, sir.
After exchange of emails last week, you'll probably be surprised if I wasn't up here in front of you today, but here I am. I have a problem with consent agenda items O and P. I have no idea what Project Purple is. No one I have spoken to has any idea what Project Purple is. When I sent y'all an email asking you what it was, I received a reply back that per Florida Statute 288.075, no one with our, with our Economic Development Agency, in our case, the Chamber of Commerce, nor the commissioners could let me know what Project Purple is. I understand that tax incentives must be given to attract businesses to cities, counties, states, whatever. The companies most always go to where they can get the best incentives. That is why these negotiations are kept secret. My problem is the number of employees, if the number of employees remain seventy or above for the first five years of this contract, we will have to pay out over sixteen million dollars to this company. Sixteen million eighty-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, to be exact. Can we afford this? What is the estimated tax revenue we will receive over the first five years of this Another question, what is the track record of our Chamber of Commerce and the BOCC in bringing in lasting companies? Another detail in this is the Florida Attorney General's Advisory Legal Opinion, informal, dated June the eighth, 2011, addressed to Derek P. Rooney, Assistant County Attorney for Charlotte County. It confirms the reading of Statute 288.075, applying only to the county's Economic Development Agency, not the county commissioners. You can Google this, I've got a copy of it right in here. If the Chamber of Commerce is still the Economic Development Agency of Putnam County, our sitting commissioners can and should tell the public what's going on. In light of this, I recommend both agenda items O and P be pulled and not placed back on the agenda until information on Project Purple is given to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballenge, for your comments. Our next card will be Terry Steves. I'm sorry, Mr. Steves, I called you Terry. I apologize. Please come, please come. Yeah, three minutes, sir. Thank you.
My name's Terry Steves. Some commissioners, I think Lible's the only one left I remember here. I'm here for the safety, and it's a heck of a day to show up for it. The county commissioners have the responsibility for safety within the county, but your government offices don't care about safety. And what I mean is, nineteen next to Sears, there's a street light down, it's been down for over a month. Road Department says, we're not gonna bother with it right now because we gotta get some money. I'm trying to get road repaired, fixed, and maintained properly on Baden Road, Baden, which is called Ranchette Way in Baden. The dump trucks tore it apart. They don't care. City says, we don't own it, we're not gonna fix it. Unfortunately, I've gone through this with everybody else that was on this council before about this. You guys come in and mandate, you know, fix real quick because the county broke it. The mail's being stopped again, and I just don't understand why the county can't understand what safety is. The fence for, like, codes enforcement, they come out and say, hey, you need to fix your fence. Well, the guy's there swearing, cussing, and threatening you and everything else, but make sure you go fix that fence or we're still gonna find you. I mean, I don't understand that. The police have been called several times to my address to stop speeders. I've got videotapes up to prove the speeders are coming by day after day, five, six cars. Nobody does anything, we don't have enough police officers. Called the road department to say, hey, put some speed limit signs up. They say, it's not our responsibility. What? I didn't understand that, and she says, well, we don't have the habit of putting speed limit signs up. There's children playing. I mean, I don't understand. Here's the sign, you know, twenty feet down the road, and the child's playing up here. When you come around that corner, there should be a sign sitting right there saying, children are playing. They don't have enough people. The county, when I called the county, I, I'm sorry, but I got the giggles because the road needs repair. I've been in construction a long time, so I know it, there's no doubt about it, and I assumed an engineer was gonna call me back, but a CAD operator called me and tried to explain to me why the road wasn't being fixed. I'm saying, she's a computer programmer. I worked on CAD, I know what it is, I worked in construction. Why is this lady trying to explain to me that the county commissioners aren't, you know, not aware of what's going on? And I think I'm here today to show you that safety is a priority in this county. A dump truck just came through your parking lot today, right through the red, I mean, right through the stop sign, never bothered stopping. I'm saying, that's uncalled for. We own dirt roads, about three hundred, four hundred roads of dirt that county owns but want repair. You have a, I have medical problems, I'm sitting here cleaning dust off my glasses. I mean, I don't understand why they can't come and spray it once in a while. I go out there with my yard and I try to spray the street before cars come because there's so much dust, so a little bit of rain helps. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Steves, today at two o'clock is our transportation meeting. Public is encouraged to be there. Mr. Tompkins over here, raise your hand, Mr. Tompkins, and Mr. Nimitz are with Public Works, they'll be glad to help you out. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak in front of the board? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. John Spells, 106 Citrus Lane. I have a question on, have y'all figured out when y'all was gonna do anything on the Dog Branch Canal?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, well, I looked on Palm at a Bluff, y'all, hit the spider down there and mowed down in the ditch in which it kinda ripped the shoulders of it up, but I looked at, if he can put that in the ditch there, the ditch there on Dog Branch ain't that wide, why don't they go in there and mow and get rid of some of that debris before we start getting into the rainy season and that water start backing up?
Mr. Spells, again, transportation meeting today at two, I think would be a good spot to do that, and I'll put it on my agenda to make sure we talk about it there. Are you able to do that, Mr. Tompkins? Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much for coming. All right, is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting. Commissioners, a consent agenda, is there any consent agenda, not agenda, I'm sorry, is there any items you wish to pull today?
Mr. Chairman, I have mine.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
I have none also, thank you. All right, the chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a proper motion of consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard, proper second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Commissioners, there is an emergency item today that has been brought to our attention, and I would ask that you entertain an idea. Mr. Press Tompkins needs to talk to us about a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant. Hang on, Mr. Tompkins, just a moment. Commissioners, are you willing to listen to Mr. Tompkins today on the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant?
I am.
Commissioner Lible?
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens? I am, and I am also. So, we'll call you up, and just a minute, you're gonna be item nine A on the agenda. So, the next item is Mr. Barney Bennett and Bill Henderson from Florida Department of Transportation, County Work Program Priorities. Sheriff?
We can, sir.
Okay. Not a problem. Mr. Bennett, if you'll sit down for just a second, we're gonna go to number item nine, Stewart-Marchman Act Partnership, page ninety-two in your agenda. Thank you, Sheriff, for pointing that out.
Good morning. I'm just here to answer questions.
All right. Why don't you give us a little preview of what's going on real quick?
We are applying for a CTU grant, which is a crisis triage and transportation unit, which will assist the county in transporting anybody under a Baker, any adults under a Baker Act, to the appropriate receiving facilities in the adjoining counties. It will relieve the amount of transportation that the sheriff's department and the police departments are currently doing, and it will also... Departments are currently doing, and will also provide continuity of care once a client is discharged from the receiving facility.
Sheriff, if you'll come up, and Colonel Wells, for just a moment. Ms. Papel, would you, you want to talk from your seat? Thank you, Nancy. What Ms. Papel just handed out was the Baker Act transport historical cost, and Commissioners, you will see that we have had quite a bit of cost. What we're hoping to do here with this grant is a matching grant, and we're hoping to reduce those numbers, am I correct, Ms. Papel, by not sending everybody out of the county, but sending them to a triage center, and that'll reduce our transportation costs down?
There's a considerable number of individuals that are transported by private transport rather than the Sheriff's Office or the Police Departments, and we incur quite a bit of cost. It's running us between a hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And this grant, this, this facility, in-county facility, will be open, correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy, from noon to midnight.
That's, that's correct.
Which is, which is the peak time. So there's, it's reasonable to think that we will, our, our costs will drop for, for the non-law enforcement transport.
Sheriff, you have the floor, sir, thank you.
Yes, the Sheriff's Office and I personally submit the app, or support the submission of this grant application. As Nancy was saying earlier, this grant is to create a crisis triage and treatment unit within Putnam County for those that have mental illness and/or behavioral health crisis. I can tell you that both anecdotally and evidence-based, there are certainly a legitimate need for this service. And essentially, what would happen is PCSO would partner with Stewart-Marchman by providing equipment and in-kind support. Ms. Papel spoke to the hours the center would be open, it's essentially noon to midnight, and how we identified that particular window of time was through research we did at the Sheriff's Office that identified those, that peak period of time whenever we experienced the most Baker Acts. And certainly, last but not least, the Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Putnam County would benefit from, from some additional crisis intervention training that would be incorporated in the grant as well.
Right, good.
And the county would partner by offering sixty-five thousand dollars cash per year for the three years of the grant, and we anticipate more than that in cost savings. So it's, it's a win.
And the rest of the two hundred thousand would be made up as in-kind contribution?
Stewart-Marchman.
Yeah, good deal. I know Colonel Wells and I chaired that committee, and Colonel Wells has been very active, and thank you, Sheriff, for allowing him to be there, and his expertise has really gotten me up to speed on it, so, Nancy, you've been a blessing to work with, so, yeah. Commissioners, is there any comments? All right, then we need to move this item forward.
This is a win-win, like Ms. Papel said. Yes, it couldn't come more timely, especially on the heels of, you know, the situation we've got going on right now. We actually have a mentally ill subject who has barricaded himself inside of a home with a firearm, so we're dealing with that right now.
Let's vote and get you on your way, how about that?
Well, Commissioner, there's two recommendations down on the bottom of the letter on page ninety-two. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I move a letter of commitment and support for the grant application be considered and, or implemented, and cash in-kind match as well.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second it.
We have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens, all in favor, or any discussion? Sorry, I keep missing that one.
None.
Okay, no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Please be safe out there, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, moving that up on the agenda.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're back to F D O T, so, unless you have a pressing matter. Where's your sidekick today? Couldn't get out of Lake City?
Yeah, I'm Barney Bennett with the Florida Department of Transportation, and yes, Bill Henderson was supposed to be with here, with me here today, but he had something come up late yesterday that he couldn't make it. And I will say that Bill Henderson, I believe you all know him, he's been with the Department of Transportation since nineteen seventy-nine, and coming the end of June, he is going to retire. So today was supposed to have been his, his final county commission meeting here in Putnam County, but he's not with us today, he's got some other business to take care of.
Would you please send him our best, it's been a privilege working with him over all the years that we've worked with him.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have three handouts I'd like to pass out.
Thank you. Thank you.
So there's three handouts, and then there's actually four items I'd like to discuss quickly. The very first item I'd like to discuss, discuss is the brochure, the Complete Streets brochure, the document that looks like this. Complete Streets is kind of a new concept for DOT, where in times past, we always had rural roadways or urban roadways, and it was either one or the other with a little bit of a transition in between. If you look in the middle of the brochure, the new philosophy is there's now eight gradations of urban to rural. Each one of those then has, when you look at the Florida Design Manual, a range of design speeds. Those design speeds then affect lane widths, setbacks for safety zones, and also affects bike paths and sidewalks as well. So beginning in January of twenty eighteen, as we go into a new design project, the first thing we're going to do is classify the roadway, the context into those eight classifications, as well as assign within those classifications what the proper design speed is. We'll then work with the local community, get, get an agreement or an understanding of what the proper context and design speed should be, and then we will go ahead and proceed with the design. The brochure and information was sent out to all the cities and the counties in our area. What's really important for today, though, is the brochure is online, excuse me, the brochure introduces a handbook, the handbook is online. If you go to FLcompletestreets.com, you can download that handbook, you can read it, and you can put comments on the handbook directly onto the website. So, so don't send comments to me because they won't get anywhere, please, please upload comments to the website. Again, it's FLcompletestreets.com. There'll be workshops in the September timeframe, they've not been scheduled yet, and the comments on the handbook itself are due on May twenty-sixth. So, any questions on the Complete Streets concept?
I do have a question, you know, Putnam County is highly dependent upon the Scrap and Scott programs, and so is our municipalities out there. Do these new designs affect that type of street?
No, they don't. These designs are only for state highways, they do not affect local streets at all, in no city or county streets.
Good, thank you. Commissioner, any other questions?
The other thing I'd like to address quickly is the...
Hang on, no, 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 go, I want to hear.
Well, I was going to talk a little more about Scrap and Scott.
Yes.
So if you've got more questions on the Complete Streets, I'll entertain that.
Can you add trail maintenance also to that discussion, please?
Yeah, we need to do that.
Yes, me too.
I'm working hard on it, I really am.
Under the Scrap and Scott programs, I was here last year and described that we, in the future, we'd have a web-based application, normally request new projects in the September, August, September timeframe, with the applications due back to us in December. We started developing a web application to do that, and lo and behold, we ran into some pretty significant technical difficulties, had to scrap the whole thing and start over again. So, going forward, we're, we're under development of a new website, again. I've also converted the forms, are going to be converting the forms to where we had discussed, where you would submit a project to us and we would select the funding source because invariably, half the projects we get, if it's submitted as a scrap, be funded as a Scott. So going forward this year, whether it be a website or by paper form, again, it still will be submit a project to us, we will figure out the funding source. For applications that were filled out already, that application form is perfectly fine because we're really trying to get the information to us because we do compare project to project. The other thing under Scrap and Scott is we are significantly underfunded across our entire district. We're receiving far more applications than we can fund. This year, we, we received eighty-five applications, we only funded ten projects, and we spend roughly ten hours per application going through the whole analysis of ride, run, and crack, and looking at crash histories and so on. So this year, most likely next year, and then we'll see later, we're going to limit to just three applications, where you just tell us what project it is you want. So in the past, you had two scraps, two Scops, two SIGPs. It's now just going to be three applications, give us your top three applications and let us, let us pick from there. Because the staff time we're using going through these applications, we, we know we can't fund them at the get-go, so why are we, why are we asking for more work that we can handle? Then in the future, we anticipate going up to more like five applications, but that's once we flush out the underfunded projects. So any questions on Scrap, Scott, SIGP type things?
Well, with the demands, though, I mean, it's all rural counties. What do you see in the future? I mean, the demand is outstripping the resources at an incredible pace, and, you know, based on this past session, I, I don't see any relief coming.
No, I, I don't either, and what we're dealing with right now is, at least in the last couple of years, we estimated projects and the actual costs coming far, far greater. And we see that going for a while. Right now, our construction costs are going up quite readily, I'm sure yours, yours is as well. So no, I don't see an end to it.
Well, I guess my question, Mr. Bennett, would be, how does FDOT take that to the legislature and show the model and what's happening, and get the appropriate appropriations to us?
We actually ask for legislative delegations with the counties to go to the legislature, the issue being that if DOT goes to the legislature and says DOT wants more money even though we're doing it for grant programs, it's DOT asking for money. Whereas if a county goes to the legislature and says, give DOT more grant money so they can fund more county roads, it's, 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 y'all are asking for us to help you.
But our legislative agenda, as you well know, that's been priority number one for as long as I can remember.
Right.
And we do not have the representation, you know, we have to go out and, and buy lobbyists now to even get access to the legislatures, getting incredibly difficult for small counties to be able to do this. The process has got to be modified, Mr. Bennett, it really does. I mean, we're, we're not equal in the request process at the legislature every year, it is a huge problem. It really is, and we have one representative in the House and one in the Senate, where the other municipalities that are much larger have multiples plus their lobbyists. I mean, it's, it's not fair. We have to, we have to, we need a voice from you.
You're preaching to the choir.
I know.
Not only would we like to see more state funding, Sun Trail funding, we'd like to see increase, and of course, at the federal level, the transportation alternative programs, those are all programs that provide money to counties, grant money to counties, and they're all tight. Transportation alternatives, again, this is federal, in nineteen ninety, we received five million dollars, in two thousand, we received five million dollars, twenty-ten, five million dollars. Today, we still receive five million dollars. The purchasing power is far, far less now than, than it was in the past.
That Sun Trail funding you just spoke of?
Yes.
Unless I'm missing something, the use, though, is very limited.
It is to a limited network, which to, to the fortune of Putnam County and St. John's County, that, that trail system, that is an eligible trail system. But yes, there's twenty-five million dollars per year, it's statewide, the statewide twenty-five million per year.
Yeah, I'm real familiar with it.
And those projects, of course, then all compete against each other for those funding.
But there's also a mention in Amendment One money that basically has been hijacked, of course, to South Florida. But there's mention in there, I think the number fifteen percent of it could be allocated to trail maintenance, and that's what we're working on at the, hopefully, the Small County Coalition is going to get involved with this at our upcoming annual conference, and we're going to, we're going to try to get the legislature to honor that percentage, whatever it is, don't quote me on the fifteen percent, but there, there is language that speaks to maintenance money. Because we rural counties, we don't have it, but we really appreciate the trail system. They are starting to be an economic boom for us, and we're kind of stellmated or checkmated right now with, we're, we're hamstrung for money, we can't, maintenance is very expensive, but, you know, the citizens of the Flor, of Florida, through that special, what's the word I'm looking for, the appropriation through Amendment One, I mean, it, it spells it out, that, you know, it can be used for that. And I think those monies should be honored and sent to the rural counties so we can embrace that to further our cause as far as these little economic engines, because we're getting those nature-based tourists. I mean, on the weekends, we're seeing bicycles and kayaks and canoes, and, and it's really coming true, and we need help, we really do, Mr. Bennett. I mean, any, any suggestions that you have for me, I will take it to Small County Coalition and through Chris Doolin, and hopefully, our lobbying effort at that level will have some success.
Well, currently, under Sun Trail funding, major maintenance items, in other words, if you've had a trail that's been down for twenty years and it needs to be resurfaced, a major maintenance item, or if there's a bridge on the system that has gotten washed out or damaged, those are eligible for repair under Sun Trail. However, the day-in, day-out maintenance, cleaning sand off, cleaning branches off, and doing the mowing, those, those are not eligible currently, that's, we're expecting a maintenance entity like you're describing to take on that day-in, day-out operations and maintenance.
But Amendment One money could, if we could get to it.
Okay.
Mr. Bennett, during the, our new legislature, I mean, new Commissioner orientation in Tallahassee, Florida Association of Counties, along with Small County Coalition, was concerned about, and we spoke to your boss up there, one of your bosses up there, about the Scrap and Scott, and the, basically, the construction side is, is eating up most of the money on these projects. And surely, we admit that some of the estimates were way underdone. We know that now, looking back. Has there been any movement on F D O T's part to give small counties some relief on the over-engineering of some of these roads?
Not specific to the over-engineering that I'm, I'm aware of. What, what we are trying to do in Scrap and Scott is say we do have an underfunded project, significantly underfunded. We look at doing a couple of things. If we have the additional funds, and usually, it's got to be really small dollar, we'll add it to it. If we can't add it to it, we'll ask the county, if they have the capability to add it to it, which Levy County added a million dollars to one of their projects, it surprised me. Generally speaking, the counties don't, but sometimes they do. The third thing we'll do is then we will take and say, okay, build to the funding you have at the very top of the list in a future year, and right now, we've been populated the fiscal year twenty-twenty, we will, we will provide funding for the balance of the project. And that's really about the limit of what I can do at, at my level. As far as, I'm not sure about over-engineering exactly. Something that did came, come up that's relatively new is we used to allow the design firm to over, to have oversight of the construction. There's some conflicts of interest that rose, and so it's, it's by mandate that the design firm cannot be the inspecting firm on that roadway project if it's a Scrap or Scott.
Right, but that drives the price up for that third party to be sitting there getting paid to...
Right.
To make sure the other party's doing what they said they would do by contract.
Right, and going forward, we'll cover that cost, we'll build those into our estimates. Just right now, it's kind of a little iffy on whether it is or not, depending exactly when the execution date of the contract is.
Well, thank you.
We're working.
I know, I know. I just wanted to mention, thank you.
All right. Any questions on, other questions on Scrap and Scott specifically? If not, the other handout I gave you is for the roundabout on State Road one hundred down in the San Mateo area. There's going to be an open house format workshop on that, June first, five-thirty to six-thirty at the San Mateo's Women's Club.
Thank you for doing this.
I'd like to invite you all to come to that workshop.
I'll be there. Thank you for having me at the San Mateo Women's Club, it's a very appropriate place.
I've never been there, this will be a first for me.
It's not far from the project, the, we could walk out the front door and point, but...
Well, that's good, that, that's the best location to have them.
Yeah. We don't have a Commissioner in that geographical area right now, so I think quite a few of us will be at this meeting representing that void we have. But just to get close to the neighborhood and, and hear their concerns, this is going to go a long way, and I thank you, Mr. Bennett, for doing it. And I'm not picking on you on the maintenance money, but we've got to resolve that, it's very important.
Right. I, I fully agree, we've got to resolve it.
Thank you for being here.
Last thing I'd like to discuss is the list of projects. This is our citizens plan, I think you are very familiar with the format of it, we're in the top part of the, the list of projects, that are all projects that are on the state highway system. Significant projects, of course, State Road twenty is, is under construction, or, excuse me, is right-of-way acquisition is going on as we push the four lane towards Latwa County. US seventeen, the portion near East Palatka is, is wrapping up, it's supposed to be complete this fall. The bridge over the Dunn's Creek, the letting of that is in September of this year. I'd say there's a whole, whole list of projects, you drop down a little bit to the local roads, and you'll see Main Street, which is down in Crescent City, as well as St. John's Avenue, or a couple of transportation alternatives projects. And then at the very bottom of the list, there's, there's a tap project to begin with. the list, there's a tap project to begin with. The Drayton Island Road ferry was, had a meeting set up for this afternoon that I understand was canceled or delayed. I'm not sure, didn't get a reason why that was, but apparently it was. It was supposed to be at 12:30 out at the East Palatka Public Works Facility. Couple other things on trails, Roberts Lane to the Water Management District, the letting should have been on the 17th. I've not heard anything about it, which is really good, because if there's a problem, that's when I hear about it. So if I don't hear of any problems, that's usually a good thing. And then over in St. John's County, the trail that goes from the St. John's-Putnam County line all the way to Spuds, that lets on the 24th of this month. So we're getting some trails down. And those are Sun Trail-funded projects.
All right, Mr. Bennett, I have one question.
Okay.
I know that FDOT, your fiscal year starts July.
Yes.
Active every year. So when you see 2018, that's really the fiscal year of July 2017 and 18, correct?
Correct. Correct.
So Highway 20. Larry Pritchett, our former property appraiser, voted for Sid Martin because Sid promised a four-lane 20 when he was in college at University of Florida. Larry's long been retired now, and now we're finally starting to see the last segment of this. Is it safe to say that sometime in July of 2018, that we'll start seeing some movement out there more than what we're seeing now?
It may not be as early as July, but sometime during that fiscal year, and I don't, I did not bring a letting plan with me.
Okay.
We will let that project to go to construction. So yes, bid it out and let it. It will be sometime, either in the calendar year, the last half of 2018, or the first half of 2019.
You know, I recall Huey Hawkins, Bill Henderson and I, Kelly Smith, walking the town of Inilacan in 1991, and talking about moving some of those homes out. And it's now just, the Weaver home was torn down. Some of Francis Whittier's house will be moved. And you've got for-sale signs on the other houses sitting there. So it's exciting to see what, I mean, it's going to be, rip up that community for a little while, but it's going to be very nice to have a four-lane all the way to Hawthorne area. So thank you.
Right. Yeah, 20 to 25 years is our timeline to get a road in.
That was a long...
Mr. Chairman, I could ask?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lible.
Mr. Bennett, one more question. On 17 South and the construction, and I know you guys are on this, but if we could talk to our constituency out here, there's a horrible amount of accidents happening in that construction zone, and some of them very serious. Is there anything we can do as a community to improve that?
Has that been reported to our construction folks?
It has. I have brought it up numerous times. I know our Public Works Director, Press Tompkins, I know Ms. Drackett's in the audience, she brought it up. I know Tina A-Rant. We've had, Ed Seaver has been, I mean, that's a lot. It's went all the way to the top.
You've hit all the big guns then.
We have.
Yeah. I don't know of anything beyond what you've done already.
Well, I mean, the norm is contact the construction manager.
Right.
And talk about it a little bit. That would...
That is the norm. If there is issues, and it has to do with accidents, it has to do with dump trucks leaving half their load on the roadway, tearing up roadways, any number, anything that has to do with that, we have, we have a person who is assigned to that project within DOT, and they'll either handle it themselves or send it to the proper department to handle it. That is, that is the norm.
Okay. We'll follow that. There's concern in the community, big time, right now. And there's, it's, it's a lot. It's not, it can't be a normal amount.
And that, well, and I don't know what the amount is. I will say that when you build four-lane highways off a two-lane of a US route, a very major arterial roadway, that is very disruptive. I mean, as you well know, it is very, very disruptive. And drivers need to be cautious. They need to slow down. They need to keep their eyes open. There's equipment moving. There's people working. You really have to rely on the driver to take responsibility for what they're doing. You also have to rely on the construction contractor not to back his backhoe into the roadway while it's open to traffic and that kind of thing.
I don't think there's a lot of that. It seems to be after-hours with the changes in patterns, like you're saying. I bet you the majority of them are that.
Commissioner Pickens, you drive that three or four times a day, don't you?
Three, four times a week, yeah. And it's, it's a lot of stuff going on there, especially when you transition to the four-lane. There's a dip, and you got traffic coming from off of 100, and, and everybody trying to meet in there. So yeah, it's kind of, it's very busy. And gentlemen, that's all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. It's always good to see you. And we always look forward to the projects, and we thank you for the partnerships that we have with you.
And I'll see if I can find someone to replace Bill to come with me. Again, I know he was, he was looking forward to being here, and something came up late yesterday that prevented him from doing so.
Please extend our congratulations on his retirement.
Yes, I'm quite envious.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We will get back on track. Item eight, Car Riggs and Ingram LLC, presentation of annual audit by county independent auditors, Ms. Tina Robinson.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. This is the book. She's going to go page by page.
That's, that's the book. I'm afraid you'd all be asleep before I got to page five, probably. I am Tina Robinson, as Chairman mentioned, with Car Riggs and Ingram. We are at State Road 19 in Palatka. And with me this morning is John Rowe, also partner in our firm. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present the results of your financial statement audit. We, as you know, we're independent auditors of the financial statements to let you know whether or not those are fairly stated. Near the front of the audit book, you'll see our auditor's report on Roman numeral pages one through three. And actually, at the top of page two is our opinions. There, we do state that your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects for each opinion unit. And they do have to be, according to the standards, there are different opinion units that we have to look at individually, including your governmental activities, your business activities, the general fund, the Better Place Plan, Capital Project Fund, Waste Management, East Putnam Water, and then the aggregate remaining funds. So all of those have a separate opinion, and each of those was fairly stated. In the last sentence on that same page, Roman numeral two, we also say that the supplementary information, which is combining schedules that aggregate, from the aggregate remaining funds, it gives you the individual fund information. Also, your schedule of grant awards is included in supplementary information, and all of that, we said, is fairly stated in relation to the basic financial statements. And then on page 145 of the audit book is a summary of your audit results. It again states that you have a clean opinion on the financial statements, and that you have a clean opinion on the major federal and state grant programs. There were, on the same summary page, there we said there were no material weaknesses found. There were three internal controls, significant deficiencies disclosed, and those are stated on page 146. Two of those were actually items that were reported in the prior year, one of which was resolved immediately after the end of the year. So in October, the ACH controls was taken care of. The P-Cards documentation not being always present is currently being resolved. And then there were two matters of non-compliance. These were, again, these were classified as immaterial non-compliance, but you had a carryforward balance on the E911 fund exceeding 30%. And they do want you to spend that down. All the money that was spent from that fund was properly expended. And also, budget contingencies for four of the funds exceed the 10%. Again, they state limits the amount that they want you to carry in a contingency. On the same page, we reported that the major federal and state grant programs, for those, you had clean opinions. And wanted to mention that for the new federal awards, you did have some new compliance requirements this year. The uniform guidance was in effect this year, and, which raised the threshold at which a single audit actually even kicks in. It raised it from $500,000 to $750,000, of which you would have exceeded both of those. So either way, you would have had a single audit. And the state went along with that also in raising their threshold to $750,000. But for each of those five programs and projects that met the criteria for major, there was no non-compliance found. And then moving on to other areas, you were well within your approved budgets for the general fund and your two major capital project funds. And in addition, all other funds were within their approved budgets. Every major fund, other than the Capital Projects Fund, which did spend everything down to complete the jail project and ended with zero balance for that capital project, all the other major funds had a positive ending fund balance. Overall, the countywide, including $109.38 million investment in capital assets, ended with a grand total ending equity of $150.4 million. Net of that is net pension liability, which is fairly new in your statements because of a new accounting standard last year. Now you have your pension liability recorded in the statements. That liability is approximately $42 million across the countywide, of which about 85% is covered in the state's plan. So you don't, you won't see that piece in your, you know, what the state's holding. You don't see it recorded in your books because you don't own it, but you do have a piece of that, and that is your portion.
Ms. Robinson, may I ask a question on that?
Mm-hmm.
Were given that number by the state each year as a liability, correct?
The state has actuaries that actually look at the whole statewide plan.
Right.
So for everybody, all the governments that are participants in the Florida retirement system. And they come up with their estimates of what that future liability is. And then the state auditor general has audits that plan, and they decide how much percentage each of the governments have. So they say you have a point 00, whatever it is on the, I don't, didn't jot down that number, but it's in your book. They say what percentage you have of that piece, yes. Also, then, going on to other long-term debt activity, you issued bonds from USDA to replace the short-term financing of the jail. You took out additional financing from the state DEP, State Revolving Loan Program, for the East Putnam Wastewater Project. And you'll see details about that in footnote number nine in your statements. And then your significant capital asset additions, of course, again, were the jail, the completed jail, the wastewater project, and paved roads. And you'll see information on that in footnote eight of your book. Then going to our annual reports that are required by the auditor general, those start on page 137, of which the first one is called a management letter. In that one, the state requires us to apply financial condition assessment procedures as of the end of your fiscal year. And we have to look to see if you actually meet the definition of financial emergency or deteriorating financial condition, and you do not. Additionally, based on your 2016 expenditures, your available, or what is, your unassigned and assigned general fund balances are sufficient to cover approximately 1.7 months of expenditures, which is close to the two months that is recommended as a goal for general operating expenditures for the coming year. The management letter also states that your annual financial report, that is being filed with the State Department of Financial Services, is in agreement with those audited financial statements. And then the report on page 139 is our test of your compliance with the Florida Statute, Section 218, involving investments. And there, we have to test to make sure that you're in compliance, and we saw no issues. Page 140 is also required by the state, was new as of last year, and that's the attest to the county's compliance with the statute, Chapter 365, about E911 funds, of which I've mentioned. The item that we noted is the excess carryforward. And then separately from the audit book, you received a letter of required communications that we give out every year. Some of that was already discussed today in my summaries. It also mentions auditor responsibilities and your responsibilities, which is a repeat of portions of your engagement letter with us. So nothing new on that portion. We're required to say whether or not we had any significant difficulties in cooperation in performing our audit, and we did not. So we're happy about that. And there were no misstatements detected as a result of our audit procedures, which, you know, if you look at all of the funds of the county, the transactions that they have, that is an accomplishment. So that really concludes our summary. As always, we do appreciate the cooperation of all of your management team. They always provide us with the information that is requested, and that is really the only way that we can perform our procedures. If you have questions, I'd be glad to take those.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Robinson?
I have none. It's been a year of audits. Thank you.
I know you've had it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this? We need to accept the, I guess we do, Mr. Manning?
Actually, it's not even necessary.
We did that already.
Okay.
In the fall.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to bring Mr. Tompkins up on item nine A.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave the subject of the audit, I did want to mention again that today is John Jones's last day with us as finance director. Susan Frank will be taking his place at the next meeting. And John has been our finance director for over 14 years, done an incredible job.
He has.
And we want to wish him well as he moves to the next phase of his life, and to also publicly thank him for all the great work he's done on our behalf.
Yes, I agree. Mr. Smith, you're right. He's often overlooked because he says so many things over there. We hear so much from him.
You did hear his speech right there at the end, didn't you?
Yes. He does a great job for the county. You'll be sorely missed, but we look forward to your retirement. Thank you. Now, you see where you're going to be sitting, right? You're not. Yes, you are. Trust me. Mr. Tompkins, you want to talk to us about a emergency item that the board has consensus on to bring to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant?
Yes, sir. The deadline for submission is June the 9th.
Did you give us a copy of that?
Um, you know, I didn't. I apologize. I gave them to Tony.
Okay. Tabitha has them? Okay. All right. That's okay. That's, I was hoping I didn't misplace mine.
Yes, sir.
We'll take a moment and get them. Tabitha, they're going through your paperwork.
While they're doing that, what it is, is we have worked with FEMA since Hurricane Matthew on hazard mitigation grants. And we had submitted two of them for Paradise Point Wastewater Treatment Plant and Port Venetista Wastewater Treatment Plants. These plants actually went underwater during the hurricane. And what the Hazard Mitigation Grant, we're asking monies for is actually to take these wastewater treatment plants that have a discharge directly to the river, take those offline, put in a master pump station, and pump that sewage back to our Gilbert Road Plant. So it would reduce the nutrients going to the river. It would give us a lot more sustainable system that we can actually take here to sewage and pump it to a treatment plant, because our Gilbert Road Plant uses percolation fields, and we don't have a discharge to the river. Those, like I said, the deadline for that is June the 9th. And since y'all didn't have a board meeting until June 13th, I had to get it in front of you to get a consensus for the commissioner, the chairman, to go ahead and sign for those applications. It is a 25% match on this. We've put in for a little over $4 million for both of the treatment plants. If we get awarded it, which we don't know yet, we're still going through the whole process with FEMA, it's, it's a no harm, no foul. If we decided, if we do get the grant and we can't come up with a match, then we just have to tell FEMA, "Thank you, but no thank you," and we'll go about our business as usual. But I thought it was prudent that we do make the application and see where we stand with it.
Mr. Tompkins, also, we have applied for St. John's River Water Management Mr. Tompkins, also, we have applied for St. Johns River Water Management Cost Share Program to run pipe down to Paradise Point.
That is correct.
So we, is it possible to say we could use some of that, if we're successful in that cost share, that we could use that as a match?
Yes, sir. We can leverage those firms in the water management district against the local match for the state FEMA funds.
Okay.
So we have two pots going at the same time, and hopefully both of them will come to fruition, but, you know, we, we go, honestly, we go after everything we can go after. But I just wanted to brought to the board to be aware that there was a match in, in the time deadline on it.
Well, I think it's important to our river that we do the best we can for it.
Yes, sir.
And by reducing those nutrients that are going into the river would be wonderful. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Mr.?
I got a couple. The, um, these, both these plants are very antiquated package plants that were built by developers in the sixties, I would say.
Sixties or seventies, in, in the state, the developers went bankrupt, out of business, and the state came in and said, "Gee, Mr. County, you're going to take these on for ownership and maintenance." So we were kind of handing them to us, so.
We've got millions of dollars in both of them.
Yes.
We didn't want them to begin with, and it's very unfair how we acquired them. But to get them out of our inventory, and this also takes East Putnam to the Dunn's Creek Bridge into the twenty, the, oh, the future. We will have water and sewer through all East Putnam in that geographical area. This is, I commend you, Press, for, for going after this. Hopefully, we'll get it, and this is huge. This is a game changer. It really is. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goddard, any questions?
No, no.
Mr. Pickens?
I just like Commissioner Lible said, we kind of inherited these things, maybe in an unfair way, and, and had to, you know, do a lot of maintenance, and like you said, they are antiquated, so, you know, hopefully we'll move forward with this and be able to remove those things and get it back to a new plant.
Ms. Papel, any comment?
Like Commissioner Lible said, it's a game changer. It, it could be the turning point that begins to make that fund self-sufficient and not needing help from the BPP or the general fund.
Yep. This is good news. And also, small developers can come in and buy Priest property to develop as little as one to ten houses, and this is really where we are as a community, not, well, it would be nice to get a few hundred, but a few will happen, won't it? Press, you experienced this in St. Johns County. I know that's how they developed. They came off these kind of systems. They got onto a grid, what's known as a closed-loop system, and lo and behold, it's happening to us right now.
And that's what we need. This helps us complete a backbone system, which would enable us to do distribution off of it, to pick up what you're talking about.
Exactly. This is good news. Please get the grant.
Yeah. Both grants. That's what we, we'll find that match. Yeah, we'll, we'll go beat the doors down for the match. All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard to support the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant. Any more further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you for that.
Very much. I appreciate your support.
We understand the emergency for this, so. Okay. Commissioners, we're going to take a three-minute or four-minute break. And our item ten, oh, I see you're all poised and ready to go over there, Mr. Sammons. Okay, codes enforcement, request for abatement, case two thousand fourteen dash zero zero five oh six, pages ninety-three through one oh six in your packet. Mr. Sammons, you have the floor, sir.
John Sammons, Putnam County Plain Development Services. This is a property at two fifty-seven Folklore in Satsuma. On the agenda items, I've detailed the process that we went through. Basically, these are, all three of these are abandoned properties that the, the owners have been non-responsive at all. It's been to the special magistrate three times. The photographs here show the deplorable condition of the mobile home here and the, and the surrounding property. We are, we don't have funds right now to do any abatements, but Mr. Hammond's wanted me to bring forth these, and some that'll be coming next month, to get them ready in case and, and when we do get funds, so that we can go ahead and abate them.
That was going to be one of my questions, is when do we see, because now the public's going to know we've done an abatement, and they're going to want these places.
I would prefer to not bring them until we're ready to do it, but Director Hammond's is my boss, and he wanted me to bring them, so.
Let's get them in the queue, and let's get them ready to go, but we need to move on them once we start, so. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Sammons?
Only question I have, can we take all three together? They're all identical, abandoned.
They're all just exactly the same. They're all deplorable. The third one was the worst on Hayes Drive and Interlochen. It's basically, that's what it looked like, so it's terrible.
These are not our normal, they're abatements. They're all abatements. If that's legal.
I believe it is.
Mr. Manning, can we take these all together?
Well, they, they each need to be voted on separately.
Okay.
Consider them, obviously, all at once, but they need separate motions.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion on?
Move approval of abatement, staff recommendations.
All right. On?
On case two thousand fourteen zero zero five oh six.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible. Proper motion?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Sammons, the next one?
Next case is two thousand fourteen zero zero seven eight nine. Same scenario. Kind of flew by the pictures there. This is another property. This is at, down off, south of Star Lake. It's on a court of cul-de-sac. All the other houses are in really good condition. This thing's fallen apart. It's been abandoned for a long time.
All right.
So we're requesting authority to abate it.
Okay.
The owner, the owner's unresponsive on this one also?
Correct.
All right, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right. Mr. Hammond's next on case number two thousand fourteen five twenty-nine.
Last one is in Interlochen and Hayes Drive, on, yeah, two thirty-five Hayes Drive and Interlochen. Uh, this is been ravaged by looters and also by, by the weather, so it's in horrible shape. We're requesting authorization to abate on the property, when and if we get funds to do that.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Sammons? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion?
I'm going to approve of case two thousand fourteen oh five two nine for abatement.
Proper motion by Commissioner Pickens?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor, signify, any discussion? I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Sammons.
Thank you.
The only thing I'm going to ask is if we can get a, maybe, how many abatements are in the queue and how we can fund those to get them?
We have four that I think you are aware of that belong to the county, and we have funds to, to put some of those. I have another four that were on the list that Brian gave me to come sometime next month.
But they're going to be backed up until the next budget year? Is that what you're referring to?
Most likely.
And how many can we do a budget year? Do you, do you know right offhand, sir?
Uh, we get twenty-five thousand dollars, and that typically will do four or five. That's about it.
Maybe if we bundled them all up and put them out as a bid package, I don't know if that would work, and maybe get with Melissa and Stacy, and maybe somebody would do maybe ten for that, for that, or, I don't know.
There's been some discussion about, I guess, a long time ago, before me, the county used to actually do that, and Public Works used to go, go do them. I don't know, Preston needs anymore, he's gone, but yeah, I don't think he needs anymore.
Well, he's not here, so we could volunteer him for that.
We could, yeah. So, I mean, we've, we've discussed options, but I don't know if we have any viable options at this point.
Understand. Well, once we abate them, like we, we said, their people are going to want these torn down.
Right.
And now that they are done, then, you know. All right. Commissioners, item number eleven, appointments. Do you have, Commissioners, I'll start with Commissioner Lible. Do you have any appointments?
Yes, I do, but the fir-, all right, we have horrible housing. When we get to the fair authority, I want to recognize J.R. Newbold and folks, and we have a lot of appointments due in June, and anyhow.
All right. Why don't you just go down the whole list, and if you have an appointment you'd like to make on any of them?
I do. Ready? Ann Hiemenz for the library board. That's H.I.E.M.E.N.Z. And Craig McLean for Blue Ways and Trails C S O representative.
Great choice. Great choice. Okay.
Guess what I'm asking for, for Mr. Newbold, is maybe a little report on the activities of the fair authority.
We just talked about that, and we're going to come to a budget.
He's in the room.
Would you want to do this now or come to a budget meeting and?
If you were better job, where you can get the budget meeting.
Okay. All right. Why don't you come up to the podium and give us the thirty thousand foot, you and Amy? Because I want to hear from Amy also, Amy Pupour, who is the manager of the fairgrounds.
And does a wonderful job.
You're welcome, Amy.
Yeah. And she's all smiles, and she's going to kill me later for making her come up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Harvick for the address.
Yeah. Please state your name and address.
John Newbold III, six-ten Old Highway seventeen, Crescent City, Florida. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on the spur of the moment. I think it's been five years. We had a workshop, came to the commission in that format, and kind of gave our operating budget, some of the projects we had accomplished, some of the short and long-term wish lists that we had at the time, and kind of gave some suggestions on how we thought they could be funded. Again, thank you for the invitation. We'll do that again soon. We've got a good operating board running right now, very active board members. We work, we meet monthly. We, you know, our goal is really to improve the grounds that are existing to the benefit of the youth and just community education and entertainment. We've made good progress over the years. I think you've seen improved buildings, improved parking lots, the paving that's been going on, improved landscaping, ticket booths, just a new sign that's finally operational again, a myriad of things that have been just mushroomed there over the last seven, eight, nine years. We've got big plans for improvements out there. We appreciate the working relationship that's been developed between the board and the commission. It feels good to have a, a good profitable little operation that's kind of a little bright spot, so we appreciate all your help. And Amy's got the new building that was done with a partnership between federal grant, Better Place money, and little savings from the fair board is bearing fruit, and she can give you a little update on what's going on in the new building.
Thank you.
Sorry, my signers are crazy. Amy Pupour, my address is one twenty-one Sunglow Avenue in Satsuma. I am the fair and fairgrounds manager during the year and during the fair. Been working at the fairgrounds for a couple of years now. Been through my third fair, and it's been challenging but fun, and I, I've seen a tremendous amount of growth with use of the fairgrounds, what we call off-season, not fair time. The fair's only nine days. We have the whole rest of the year that the entire county has started to recognize the fairgrounds as a place to hold events. We have had everything from company Christmas parties to wedding receptions, actually have a first whole wedding that's going to be there in June. Someone wanted to get married there and just stay all day, so I've, we're just continuing to see a massive rise in calls. I'm getting calls out for two years down the road now. People are already calling, saying, "I want to be there." So everything that's being done there with the, the new expo hall, you know, it's, it's still a work in progress. You know, we're making updates to make it fit what everybody wants with suggestions that have been made while people are coming. So it's been really great to have a chance to, to just bring those to the fair board, bring them to the whole community and things like that. So it's a long list of projects that hoping to continue to make good, good progress over there and, and see some updates, so, thank you guys.
Thank you. All right. We know how important the fairgrounds is as an economic driver to the county, and I will say that y'all did a fantastic job during the fair. I was there many nights, and the cleanliness and the friendliness that was going on, and seeing all the fair board members in their action, it was just a wonderful time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah, I do have a comment. I, I, while I was there, I took the time to walk the parking lots several times, and just to make sure it was the way it's supposed to be, because it was a bit of a mess before the fair. But I noticed a lot of St. Johns County tags out there. You know, it's not uncommon for the Jacksonville, whatever, but are we starting to partner more and more with St. Johns County?
We are. We actually reached out this year to St. Johns County with a lot of our exhibits and our competitions for adults and the children. We, we made contact and invited them over to our pre-K day, which they brought, one of their schools came, brought almost a hundred children. So it, it opened up a door that they don't have a county fair and haven't for years, and so it was a really great opportunity to say, "Hey, come be neighbors and join us for fun," and they did, and I, I would expect that that's going to just grow and grow and grow and continue to go that direction. St. Johns County residents have been invited to participate in almost every exhibit and competition that we have available, with the exception of some of our major livestock shows.
You know, Amy, we are meeting with the surrounding county commissioners and county commission and their staff. We are waiting on St. Johns County for a date, so as soon as we get that date, we'd love for you to be there, you and J.R., be there.
Sure.
And personally invite the commissioners and, and the county to come and be a part of that. Again, this is just huge for, for that region.
We'd be happy to do that, and, you know, there's already a real good working relationship between, kind of, this tri-county farm bureau, farming community. We've been in contact with their IFIS and four-H leadership, and we've done this in a purposeful way, and it's, it's very, it's a very, a good synergy right now. So we, we appreciate the invitation to come participate in that, and we hope to, to grow that cooperation.
Good. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Mr. Lible?
I just want to publicly thank Mr. Newbold for your leadership, because all the things that you just listed occurred under your leadership, and the addition of Mrs. Pupour, I think, has been great. Your rapport is good, Mrs. Pupour.
Say that three times.
People are really singing your song and your management skills, and I thank you both, because more than anything, we're competitive now, very competitive with, you know, there are not many agricultural fairs left in the whole entire state. St. Johns County is developing, you know, the fastest developing county in the, in the whole state of Florida, and the corridor on two oh seven is, is really ag, so there's nowhere for them to go. So reaching out to that, those folks is, is really smart and getting ahead of it. We have the only fairground that's really in the middle of a municipality with hotels, restaurants, and the amenities. Every other county, they're in ten buck two, as you know. So we got a unique situation here, and I think between you two, we're really developing. And the, I can't believe five years have gone by since we've sat down, but when you come to that meeting, J.R., will you please bring, you know, just a list of the capital improvements and what the fair authority has made as far as monies over the years? We need to have that discussion and, and how we can help you continue your success, and thank you very much.
We'll give you a complete breakdown, kind of, of our annual operating budget, off-season, the operations for the fair, our historical incomes and things of that nature. So you'll have a very complete picture of, of what we can do in, in the time periods, given the projects that we have on our mind, so we appreciate your help.
Thank you. And you know what's exciting to me is, I know you had made recommendations on us appointing the new board members or existing, but I've gotten a lot of calls of people who really want to be on that, and it's exciting to see that they go, "Hey, there's something happening. I want to be a part of it." So, you know, not saying we're going to change any, I don't. So, you know, not saying we're gonna change any, I don't know that, but I'm just saying, you know, it's fun to see people really wanna be a part of that now.
Well, it is exciting, and I spend a lot of time walking around, talking to people who are involved, talking to people that I have not seen before as part of the action, and a lot of people volunteer, and we've, these board appointments that we've kind of recommended to you, we kinda go about that in a purposeful way, because we, kinda once a year, we look at ourselves and do a little needs assessment and decide, where do we need talent? We're missing talent in either livestock or sponsorship or communications or advertising, and then we kinda find, identify someone who is most, most often it comes from someone who's been volunteering, and we see their capabilities, and then we say, okay, we kinda like to have you involved. So, you know, it's a, it's been a good program so far, and we just appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
With what you just said, I wanna recognize Marty Lehman, has turned down my request to serve, but he's been through, through all these years and single-handedly in different divisions, especially, but pre-sewer in East Palaca, Marty really got us a drainfield through his suppliers and used his talents and contacts to advance the fair to where it is now, and I just wanna recognize him, you're gonna hear a big vacuum sound when he leaves. He's been great, he's one of those members you're speaking of.
He really is, and you know, he's one of those guys we went to because he knew he had, he has a talent for getting people and just.
Yes.
Massages them or he squeezes them for money. He's just able to do that, and they do it willingly, because you know, it's neat when a, a private individual or a business will recognize what they do and how it can benefit the community, and they're, you know, he can, he can talk them into.
He's a real leader. I got to work with him five or six years in that capacity at the fair board, and it was, I learned a lot from him. He was a very good man.
Well, we'll see you soon. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, Commissioner Lible, is there any other appointments that you?
That's all I have today.
Commissioner Goddard, do you have any appointments along?
Yes, I do, and it's back on to the fair, fair authority. Brian Eubanks has resigned, and Brian, Brian was a major asset, I know that. He's got other things going on now, though, and I'm recommending Kyle Hines as his replacement.
Great. Kyle would be a great person on that board. Yep. Okay, so we have Kyle Hines. Any other appointments for you along those same lines?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens, do you have any appointments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I do, on the fair authority, I spoke with Frank Bush, and he's interested in serving another term, so I'd like to nominate him.
Okay.
And then also on the zoning board of adjustment, I'd like to recommend or nominate Chase Barnes to fill that slot.
Chase Barnes?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so let's, is that all?
Is it.
Okay, and I have none, so let's go through these. The fair authority, Commissioner Pickens is recommending Frank Bush, Commissioner Goddard is recommending Kyle Hines, library board, and Hisman, is that correct?
Heimenz.
Heimenz, okay. Mr. Lible has nominated her, Waterways and Trails, Commissioner Lible has nominated Craig McLean, and zoning board of adjustment, Chase Barnes. Commissioner Goddard, do you have somebody?
No, I was, you said Waterway and Trail, I thought it was, is that the?
It's the Blue Ways and Trails, yeah, yeah. Okay, we have those nominations, so the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, do we accept this?
Okay. We have proper motion by Commissioner Goddard, proper second by Commissioner Lible, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. County administrator, Stacy Papel?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? County attorney, Stacy Manning?
Just briefly, I just wanna say that I thank you all for your vote today, Project Purple.
Is that why you wore a purple shirt?
It is.
And Commissioner Harvey, too?
Everybody's gonna see that this is very good for this community, and y'all did a good thing today. In that vein, I just wanted to put on the record that I, I provided you all before the, at the beginning of the meeting, and I also provide this for the clerk, showing that the review team, in accordance with the county's ordinance, you know, did review that grant agreement and did recommend its approval, so again, thank you all, congratulations to this community today.
It's so difficult not to share, but it's gonna be great for the county. Clerk of the Court, Mr. Tim Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have one question from a member of the public, and it referenced the recordings of the county commission meetings, and I think the question came up at the last meeting about sharing the meetings with the school board, and then Sonny picks up that recording that then he puts out over the air, and that the person was questioning if that had been done, and I said I would just pose the question, so, and I'm not, don't know, you have an answer, and I don't really need an answer.
I do.
Well, we do need to.
I have that answer right now.
Good, okay, thank you.
I can tell you that Mr. Mike McDaniel has emailed me and thanked me. Basically, Brandon is actually getting that information over to them the same day, and the school board is putting it on, and so is EOC, so that's really working out well now, and it's moving forward, and I believe our meetings almost are uploaded to YouTube within the same day, if not the next day. Yeah, and Brandon just gave me thumbs up, so yeah, it's, it's really moving fast, and we're glad for that. My next goal, Brandon, is streaming online live, that would be wonderful, but we'll, we'll get there, but thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
And do thank Mr. Jones for all the years of service that he's provided to this board.
We're gonna send you an invitation to a little lunch next Wednesday.
Okay, good deal. We can always eat. Yes, sir, thank you.
We like lunches.
We do. Okay. Commissioner comments, I'll start with my left, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it was good to have the Wolfson Bass Tournament back in Putnam County, some four hundred participants or four hundred boats, and for the third year, I was, along with Commissioner Lible, asked to help park the trucks and the boats, which starts at three o'clock, but since I'm from South Putnam, they allowed me to show up.
He was late, he got there at two-thirty in the morning.
But it's really an effort from the Sheriff's Department and the Palaca Police Department, really the Chamber of Commerce, Dana Jones, Chairman Greg Bacon, Taylor Douglas, and a whole group of people to provide the organization to, to park that many boats in downtown Palaca. It starts at the riverfront and goes all the way down to the old school board building over to the courthouse, Ameris Bank, and I think they even put some in McKinnon's furniture parking lot near the post office, so that's how far they go, and they provide a shuttle service so the participants didn't have to walk all that way back to the, back to the boat ramp, and also, I talked to Dana Jones last night and said they stayed around and took them back after the tournament, so it was a big day for Putnam County, I'm glad that they, they wanna be here. And also, I'd like to recognize Mayor of Crescent City, Brett Peterson. Brett, can you, would you like to say anything? We, as I can say, in our consent agenda, I was, we approved a letter of recommendation to support the Union Bethel Church in Crescent City to apply for a grant to refurbish that church. A little history on that, that church was pastored by A. Philip Randolph's father back in the day, and A. Philip Randolph was born in Crescent City, and Philip Randolph was really predecessor for Martin Luther King with human rights and, and labor, so it will be a, hopefully, hopefully we can get that grant and refurbish that church, so it'd be good for, for Crescent City, and that's all.
I agree. Commissioner Lible, I'll go over to you.
Bill said much, Commissioner Pickens said much about the Wolfsons Tournament, I just wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce, they are known for their organization skills. When they come, when it comes to these tournaments, that's why the Wolfsons Group picks the city of Palaca to hold this event. We park four hundred and thirty-something bass boats from two a.m. to safe light, which is around six o'clock, six fifteen, and that was just amazing. It was a machine, and it was really a lot of fun, I've done it a few years, and I'm just proud of my community when we do things like that, but looking forward to Blue Crab this weekend, we're gonna have, they're estimating a hundred and seventy-five thousand people downtown Palaca, so come out and be part of that number, and be safe.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes, I wanna thank everyone for being here. Again, the, the Wolfsons is always great, the Blue Crab Festival is gonna be fantastic, and make sure that we thank all our grads. This is the last week of school, and, and then all the kids will start sleeping in. With that said, though, thank you for being here.
Hopefully, they go to work. Do wanna say, I got a few things along with Blue Crab this week. The Viking Five K Run, walk, stroll if you have to, is going, that's me, the stroll part, is happening Saturday morning. It goes from Brunson Maholand House to East Palaca and back across the bridge, and that's a big thing for St. John's River State College. I'll be giving water out over on the East Palaca side. I do wanna thank God for rain, it's been wonderful to get some rain, I was out welding on a trailer there today and caught the grass on fire and, you know, so, I mean, it's just, it, these things happen, and we've gotta be careful in this community, but thank God, we've gotten some rain, and we appreciate it. And commissioners, if you hear anything about Memorial Day, I haven't gotten any type of scheduling on Memorial Day celebration, but as soon as I do, I'll make sure everybody gets it out, and if you get something, if you'll pass it out. Today, we have a transportation meeting at two o'clock, so if there's nothing further for the good of the order, in hearing none, this meeting will stand adjourned, thank you.